All right, give yourselves a round of applause. One, for making it through that traffic. And two, be honest, raise your hand if you almost went to City Hall tonight. Right? That's a good bit of us. Uh, welcome to the Deerwood Castle for this monumental occasion. I know that we can get some more seats in here, make some friends, find some friends. We're all one Duval here, ladies and gentlemen. And we love having you here for this special, special time. Welcome to the 2025-2026 Installation Ceremony of the Jacksonville City Council Officers honoring Kevin Carrico, the President Designate, and Nick Howland, Vice President Designate. Whether you are a family member, a friend, or just someone who loves this city, we want to welcome you and thank you for being here. On behalf of your hosts, ladies and gentlemen, we thank you for your attendance this evening.
Good evening. All the elected officials who appeared tonight are here because of you, and they welcome the opportunity to resent you with, to represent you with honesty, integrity, and fairness. Jacksonville is blessed to have such dedicated public servants for our community. Stakeholders and, well, public servants and community stakeholders. They take time away from their families and businesses to make sure our city works in an efficient and an effective manner. They are committed to our community's safety, economic growth, and quality of life.
I'm sure if you look left and right, ladies and gentlemen, you are going to recognize some very familiar faces, right? We'd like to take time to thank our elected officials, all of our current and former elected officials who are joining us this evening. We appreciate your presence here, and we thank you for all that you do for this amazing city. Please join us in a warm welcome for all of our special guests. Mayor and council members, as your name is being called, please stand to be recognized. Jacksonville Mayor Donna Deegan. Councilmember Canamaro, District One. Councilmember Mike Gay, District Two. Councilmember Will Lanin, District Three.
Councilmember Michael Boylan, District Six. Councilmember Jimmy Peluso, District Seven. Councilmember Reggie Gaffney Jr., District Eight. Councilmember Tyrone Clark Murray, District Nine.
Councilmember Jacoby Pittman, District Ten. Councilmember Raul Arias, District Eleven. Ladies and gentlemen, your 2024-2025 City Council President Randy White, representing District Twelve. Councilmember Rory Diamond, District Thirteen. Councilmember Rockman Johnson, District Fourteen.
Councilmember Terrence Freeman, at large, Group One. Councilmember Ronald B. Salem, at large, Group Two. Councilmember Chris Miller, at large, Group Five.
I know what you're saying. How did we fit them all on this tiny stage, ladies and gentlemen? And they absolutely always agree all the time. So it's great to have them here in close quarters, right? At this time, we will introduce your City Council Leadership. 2025-2026 Council President Designate, Councilmember Kevin Carrico, representing District Four. 2025-2026 Council Vice President Designate, Nick Howland, at large, Group Three. Don't worry, we got the seating chart right. We saved you both seats. Ladies and gentlemen, one more time, please, join us in a round of applause and appreciation for your Jacksonville City Council elected officials.
Ladies and gentlemen, our judge this evening is the Honorable Gary Flower, Duval County Court. Please join me in a round of applause. Would everyone please stand and remain standing for the invocation by Pastor Gentri Doxy, Agape Church International? God is calling. Let us go before the throne of grace. Dear gracious and heavenly Father, we pause in your presence with full hearts and thanksgiving, grateful for another day to serve, to lead, and to make a difference. We lift up before you today the leadership of this great city, the city of Jacksonville, Florida, a city known as bold, and one we pray will continue to be bold in truth, bold in righteousness, and bold in standing up for what is just and fair for all its citizens. Lord, we thank you today for my dear brother, the councilman, and present, President Designate Kevin Martin Carrico. We ask you to anoint him with the wisdom of Solomon, that he might discern rightly and lead justly. Grant him the courage of David to face the challenges he will, without fear, and stand firm in the face of his giants. And above all, give him the love of Jesus, so that compassion and grace will be the foundation of every decision he makes. Now, God, we lift up our mayor, Mayor Donna Deegan, that you will give her vision, discernment, and divine strategy. We pray for property appraiser Joyce Morgan. May her leadership be marked with integrity, transparency, and truth. God bless Sheriff TK Waters with wisdom and peace as he works to protect and serve every neighborhood in our city. Lord God, we also lift up the fire chief Kurt Wilson and the entire Jacksonville Fire and Rescue Department, strengthen their hands and shield them as they risk their lives for our community. We pray for our nation, for, excuse me, for our national, state, and local leaders. We pray for every member of the City Council. Unite them, guide them, use them. Let there be no division among them, but let the spirit of unity and servant leadership prevail in all things. And now, Lord, let this be a city of justice, a city of equity, a city that lifts up the least among us and never turn a blind eye to those in need. Make us a beacon of light for all the world to see, not because of our power or our prestige, but because of our humility and our mercy and our obedience to you. And because we know you always hear our prayers when we pray, we thank you in advance for the victory and all that you're about to do through this leadership. We declare it done in Jesus mighty and massless name. It is so. Amen.
Big amen. Thank you, Pastor Doxy. We appreciate your time and those wonderful words.
Now, ladies and gentlemen, please join me for the Presentation of Colors by the Mandarin High School Navy or JROTC as our honored guest, daughter of the City Council President Designate Carrico, Monroe Carrico, leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by our National Anthem to be performed by the President, the Principal of Gregory Drive Elementary School, Ms. Agina Sapp.
Please be seated, everyone. Now, we can't move on with the program without a huge thank you to that performance that we just saw there, the patriotism. A special thank you to Mandarin High School Navy JROTC, Go Mustangs. Monroe Carrico, I think you did a spectacular job with all of those different pledges right there. And then, sending it home, incredible, incredible work. Principal Sapp, amazing work. Thank you all for the Presentation of Colors, Pledge of Allegiance, and singing of the National Anthem. And let me tell you, if Kevin and Nick could have a flyover, they would have totally, totally done it. But the roofs don't come off on this just yet. That's in the next iteration of the Deerwood Castle. At this time, I'd like to call forward the 2024-2025 Council President Randy White and Council President Designate Kevin Carrico for the Presentation of the Gavel.
President White, in appreciation for the outstanding leadership, innovation, dedication, and courage you have demonstrated during your term as President of the Jacksonville City Council, the impact of your commitment to serving the citizens of Jacksonville and improving the quality of life in our city will long last and beneficial to us all. I present you with the gavel. And I know you're gonna love this, I'm not even gonna read it. This flag flew over City Hall for Council Presidents, Council President White's last meeting, and is folded up, and we're gonna present him with his flag today so he can keep that in his office or his man cave or wherever he shall place it. Here you go, President. And one more thing. On behalf of all of, all the colleagues here, all nineteen of us, we want to just bless you with a little something on behalf of our appreciation for your leadership. Thank you, sir. Job well done.
I need some help here. Uh, before I make my remarks, this will be the first time in my life I've corrected a preacher, so I want to be careful. Make sure a bolt of lightning don't get us all. But Chief Powers, Keith Powers was the fire chief. Kurt Wilson was the last fire chief. So I wanted to bring Chief Powers. I wanted to say his name, because he'll be retiring Monday, and I want to make sure he was recognized. Thank you. Serving as your council president this past year has been one of the greatest honors of my life. As I stand here tonight, I'm filled with gratitude for the opportunity to lead for the people I've worked alongside in for the progress we've made in our city. When I took this role, excuse me, I committed to leading with fairness, transparency, and purpose. And I'm proud to say we stayed that, to that course. We worked through tough, big issues. We tackled tough conversations, and we did so with respect for each other. We made sure residents had more ways to follow our work and to have their voices heard. We streamlined the procedures and made council operations better. But the heart of this job is not just the paperwork or the policies, it's for the people. I've had the chance to visit every corner, excuse me, and listen to learn and to witness the incredible spirit of our community. I want to thank my colleagues on this council. The role is not always easy, and we don't always agree, but I respect the passion and dedication of each of you. The council staff, thank you for being steady hands behind the scenes. To my family, thank you for your patience, your love, and your belief in this work. And finally, to the people of Jacksonville, thank you for trusting me to help lead this city forward. I have never taken that responsibility lightly. Our city is growing, and I am confident in the future because I've seen the strength of its people. As the, as we pass the gavel to Council President Carrico, I do so with pride. The work continues, and I know he will be in, it will be in good hands. Thank you, Kevin, and God bless Jacksonville. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, one more time, Council President White, thank you so much for your words. Thank you to your service to the city, your love, and of course, all your service in the fire department and public service. So thank you one more time, ladies and gentlemen. And now it's time to call forward the Jacks Gents Step Team for a special presentation.
The Jacks Gents are Jacksonville's premier youth leadership institute, founded in Jacksonville, Florida on March twenty-ninth, two thousand and sixteen by Shemari Mari D. Gloucester. The organization is home to young males who are all-stars in their community. The past year, the Jacks Gents have yielded three hundred community service hours, maintained a three-point-four program GPA. Sixty-seven percent of the members are leaders at their schools, and the young men before you are the two thousand and twenty-five High School State Step Champions. City of Jacksonville, welcome your Jacks Gents. On behalf of the Jacks Gents, our founder Mari Gloucester, and our entire support system, Councilman Carrico, we are grateful by your invitation to perform at your installation. With the sphere of humility, we want to say thank you for all you and your colleagues do to keep programs like ours running. Congratulations on a successful presidency ahead. Whoa, 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 one more thing before we slide on out of here. We have one more thing left to show you.
Okay, Mr. Gloucester, can we give it up one more time for the Jacksonville Gents? So a little short story, I actually was a part of another mentor organization called the Omega Lampadists of Jacksonville. And Mr. Shemari Gloucester is the, the director of the Jacks Gents, who are a national-winning step show team. So can we give it up another round of applause for them one more time for having the national steps in the building? At this time, the Honorable Gary Flower, Duval County Court Judge, will swear in the Honorable Nick Howland as Vice President Designate for the twenty-two, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six council year within the consolidated government Jacksonville-Duval County. Will the Honorable Nick Howland and his wife, Malu, please come forward?
Please, if you'll please click your right hand, raise your left hand and repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I am duly qualified.
That I am duly qualified.
To hold office.
To hold office.
Under the Constitution.
Under the Constitution.
Of the state.
Of the state.
The Charter.
The Charter.
And Ordinance Code.
And Ordinance Code.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
And honor.
And honor.
The Constitutions.
The Constitutions.
Governments.
Governments.
And laws.
And laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of the state of Florida.
And of the state of Florida.
I will support.
I will support.
Protect.
Protect.
Defend.
Defend.
And honor.
And honor.
The Charter.
The Charter.
The ethics laws.
The ethics laws.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
Rules.
Rules.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
Of the city of Jacksonville.
That I will well and faithfully.
That I will well and faithfully.
Perform the duties.
Perform the duties.
Of City Council Vice President.
Of City Council Vice President.
Of which I am now about to enter.
Of which I am now about to enter.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for the honor again.
Thank you.
To the mayor, to the sheriff, Council President White, Senator Yarborough, Representatives Duggan and Michaels, Chief Judge Day, Judge Flower, General Fleming, and other elected and appointed officials in the room tonight, to my wife Malu, my boys Bennett and Lucas, to my mom Karen, to my other colleagues on council, to my assistant Amber, and all my good friends and mentors in the audience, thank you. Thank you for your trust in me, and thank you for your belief in me. Thank you for your friendship, and thank you for your support. Malu, most importantly, twenty-four years of an amazing marriage, twenty-four plus and counting. Thank you for your strength and for everything you do for me and for our family. I love you. I'll keep it short tonight because tonight really is Kevin's installation, not mine, and we're gonna be in fantastic hands here in a few minutes when Kevin is sworn in as City Council President. Uh, I also think if I yield some of my balance of my time to him, he'll make good use of it. He usually does. Um, but I do have one point I'd like to share. I have a friend here in the audience, a Navy shipmate of mine on guided missile destroyer USS Chandler back in the mid nineteen nineties. He's now a retired naval officer and a civil engineer in town and a member of our city's Downtown Development Review Board. Pete Deulis, I know you're here in the audience somewhere. Pete has been a friend for three decades. One night at sea somewhere in the Eastern Pacific in nineteen ninety-six, we had a ship and, uh, sorry, we had a fire in the ship's radio room, which I was in charge of at the time. Before I even had time to assign a team to don their gear, uh, grab the fire extinguisher, enter the enclosed space, and put out the fire, Pete just did it. It was an intense few minutes, and I remember it vividly. That's the thing about the military, about being part of a team, doing something unique and intense together, deploying for months, going through good times and bad together. You form a special bond with those teammates. You probably come from different walks of life. You probably have vastly different political opinions. You may even root for rival sports teams. But you went through unique and difficult times together, and you believe in a common mission. You have that bond. Now, I've said this several times leading up to this night, and I'll say it again now. I've enjoyed this team, this city council, as much as I've enjoyed any in my career. Ty, Chris, Reggie, Jacoby, Terrence, Will, Michael, Randy, Ron, Kevin, Ken, Raul, Rockman, Mike and Jimmy, Matt, Joe, and Rory, who are not here. I have enormous respect for each of you guys. We've already gone through some tough times, some good, some easy, some difficult, and maybe every council does, but this one does seem special to me. We may pick at each other on camera. We may picket each other on camera or on the dais, but we joke with each other in the green room and on the fourth floor. We've gone through lows together already, just two years into this council, such as the tragic Dollar General shootings and the devastating loss of Officer Brad McNew. We've also enjoyed highs, such as the long overdue recognition of Johnny May Chappelle. The approval of the stadium deal, which also keeps the Jaguars here for 30 years. And a significant reduction in the murder rate in Jacksonville, and for that, we have Sheriff and the men and women of JSO to thank. The point is, I'm pretty sure we'll have a lot more challenges ahead of us and a lot more fires to put out together in the future, which is why I'm so honored that this body has chosen me to be Vice President, Vice President of this team, and potentially to be President next year. This council has political differences. For that, we're sure, but we also share that common mission. Everyone on this council wants to keep our streets and our neighborhoods safe. Everyone on this council wants to see a vibrant and growing downtown and see infrastructure investment in all of Jacksonville's neighborhoods. Everyone wants to see vital services operating at peak efficiency. Everyone here would love to have just a fraction of the capital investment that Jimmy Peluso gets in his district. Everyone here wants to make Jacksonville an attractive place for families and companies to locate, and I'm pretty sure everyone here wants to do it as efficiently and with as much fiscal responsibility as possible. It's Kevin's goal and mine to make Jacksonville one of the best cities in the country to live, work, and play. We'll hear more about Kevin's goals here in a few minutes, but of this, I have no doubt. This council, led by this new president, has the talent to deliver those goals and those priorities, and we will do so as a team. I look forward to working with Council President Carrico and each one of you on this council, on this team, in the months and in the years ahead, and I look forward to your friendship for decades more. Thank you all again for this honor and this opportunity. Thank you, Randy White, for your steadfast and exemplary leadership. Congratulations in advance to my good friend and our next Council President, Kevin Carrico, and may God bless this great city of Jacksonville.
Thank you and congratulations, Honorable Nick Howland, on being selected by your peers to serve as Vice President of, ladies and gentlemen, your 2025-2026 Jacksonville City Council.
That was a great speech. I think he did really well. He probably could have won Youth of the Year, maybe, if y'all are familiar. Now it is time for a special video presentation by Bold City Media, followed by a musical selection by Akia Yuwanda.
What a great accomplishment. I am so proud of you.
Congratulations on this amazing accomplishment, on being named the City Council President, and I know that you are going to do great things.
Kevin is a person who's very authentic. He has a heart of gold, and he does what he says. He's very well-liked. He's an amazing father. Anytime you mention his daughter's name, his eyes light up, and it is so amazing.
We're so excited to be here with you today and sharing this experience with you. From the Boys and Girls Clubs of Northeast Florida and myself, we're extremely proud of everything you've been able to accomplish with our organization, and we're really excited about seeing what the future holds for you as City Council President.
I have watched you grow over the years, and I am so, so proud of you. You've always been supportive, whether we call you at 1:00 AM in the morning or whether we call you at 9:00 AM in the morning. You've always been there for me.
You're awesome, the way you communicate, the way you listen. You're one of the best listeners that I've been around.
Thank you for being reliable and always supportive. You are always there when needed. You're compassionate, and you're always available to help.
You've always shown up for me. You always answer when I call. You are consistent.
Now, the one fun fact that we can talk about Kevin, he's an FSU diehard Seminole. They're terrible, but he still love them. Can't blame the guy, but at the end of the day, what we do know is, he shows that he not only loves you when you're winning, but also when you're losing. So that's the consistency that we have in this president.
Think of, when I think about Kevin, is the fact that he can sing, and he can sing like he's got some soul in him. It's just unimaginable.
Carrico, you know I have a lot of memories with you. We have been places, we have done things. Some of them not so good for this video. We'll talk about that personally. I remember when you came over to Hyde Grove when I was a unit director, and one of our kids would not let you leave. He followed you around, followed you around, and you had to do the activities with him, and you were looking like, I did not come here for this, but you fell in line and you did the work, and for that, I am so forever grateful.
One of my fondest memories with you is we were in Savannah at a training, and we were able to get out and go have some dinner, and then we wandered into a karaoke bar, and you lit up the room, and all of our team and everyone, all the Boys and Girls Club team members really loved it. It was so much fun. You kind of put the Boys and Girls Club into the song that you were singing and really shut the place down.
My heart is filled with joy to know that you are now our new President of the City Council for Duval County.
We appreciate you, my brother. We thank you for everything that you've done, and thank you for everything that you've done for the Boys and Girls Club and what you are continuing to do for our city.
I know you've worked with all of our organization and mentored a number of our team members, and they're so excited they're here with you today, and we cannot wait to see what you're able to accomplish in this position. So again, congratulations and a deep thank you from myself and the Boys and Girls Clubs of Northeast Florida.
Kevin, again, I'm so proud of you. Thank you for your service to not just the Boys and Girls Club, but the city of Jacksonville. God bless you and stay humble.
Akia Yuwanda, everybody. I gotta say, Kev, I was thinking you were gonna hop up and grab the microphone and duet with her. Akia, did you think he was gonna hop up with you? He was close. He was, he knew all the words. He was, he was right there. Thank you, guys, for keeping him down. But one more time, I mean, what amazing, amazing talent we have here in our great city, including Nico Flowers, who many of you were here as we were up on stage with him when he was the National Youth of the Year for Boys and Girls Clubs. I gotta give you that little, that little shout-out. So many people making our great city proud. Now, ladies and gentlemen, it is a pleasure to call the Honorable Kevin Carrico to be sworn in as your President of the 2025-2026 Jacksonville City Council by the Honorable Gary Flower, County Court Judge. President Designate Carrico, would you and your special guests, please go to the microphone.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear
that I am duly qualified
that I am duly qualified
to hold office
to hold office
under the Constitution
under the Constitution
of the state
of the state
the charter
the charter
and ordinance code
and ordinance code
of the city of Jacksonville
of the city of Jacksonville
that I will support
that I will support
protect
protect
defend
defend
and honor
and honor
the constitutions
the constitutions
governments
governments
and laws
and laws
of the United States
of the United States
and of the state of Florida
and of the state of Florida
I will support
I will support
protect
protect
defend
defend
and honor
and honor
the charter
the charter
the ethics laws
the ethics laws
ordinances
ordinances
rules
rules
and regulations
and regulations
of the city of Jacksonville
of the city of Jacksonville
and I will well and faithfully perform
and I will well and faithfully perform
the duties
the duties
of City Council President
of City Council President
on which I am now
on which I am now
about to enter
about to enter
so help me God
so help me God
congratulations
My turn?
It's your turn, sir. You get the microphone.
Thank you. Three minutes. Yeah, 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 right. Yeah, right. Well, mama, we made it. Come on. Listen, I understand the assignment. We were just ranked the most boring city in America by a local media outlet. Somebody should have invited them tonight, because we're gonna change that. This should have showed up right now. I want to thank you all for being here to help me celebrate being inaugurated as the 57th President of the Jacksonville City Council. Thank you all for being here. But before I get to my thank yous and before I start talking about the priorities, I really just want to open up the veil and just let you, let you in and tell a little bit about my story. Can I do that for you? So I grew up in a military family, got the Colonel right here on the front row, my dad. We moved all over the world, all over the country, and that kind of childhood makes you resilient, makes you have to adapt and adjust and learn how to fit in in new places. And what that did for me was just allow me to survive in any scenario, allow me to adapt, and sometimes that was good, because I could hang out with the smart kids. But sometimes, I became a leader amongst the kids who were maybe making some bad decisions. I made good decisions, like getting into Florida State University, FSU, who knows? But then I made some bad decisions, like trying to major in house parties and nightclubs. But one night, it was actually February 13th, 2004, I decided not to go out. For some reason, everyone was gonna go out, hang out on the town. I was like, I'm just gonna stay home. All my roommates were out on the Tennessee Strip, and it was that night when I just felt a quiet, still spirit speaking to me. That was the Spirit of God telling me it was time to change your ways. It was time to think about life in a different perspective. So I didn't really know what that meant, but I dropped down to my knees, I started crying, I wept, and I said, "God, I want you to save me. I want to live for you now." And I didn't really know what that meant, so the next night, I was back at the bar. And I, I went up to my friend, and I was like, "Hey, bro, you'll never, you'll never guess what happened." He goes, "What?" He goes, "I just got saved." He was like, "Well, I don't, I don't really know. Like, what's different about you?" "Well, I don't know. I'm a, I'm a child of God now." So for a couple of months, I kind of wrestled, like, what does it mean? You know, I was just, you know, 20, 21 years old. And, well, God has a way of sitting you down and showing you the way when you don't find that way. I was already on probation for being a wild college shenanigan, acting up, causing trouble, and I didn't take that seriously, that slap on the wrist, so I violated my probation. And in Leon County, that comes with a 30-day mandatory jail sentence. So as a college student, I found myself locked up in the Leon County Jail. And I was in jail with grown men, and instead of thinking about my finals and what I had to do to get through FSU, I had to think about survival, had to think about what I was gonna do. I thought I'd ruined my life, but it was that moment when God really allowed me to figure out what it was to follow Him. I got a Bible. I got with a prayer group. I read the Word. We studied, we prayed, and I came out of that jail 30 days later on fire for Christ. That's a good time to clap. And now that I'm on that path, I remember that public service is more than a duty and an honor, it's a calling. So I'm not ashamed to say I had a rock-bottom moment. In fact, I've used my story and my personal testimony when I was at the Clara White Mission. Where's mama? When we had those ex-offenders coming in off the streets thinking their life was hopeless, and what were they gonna do? I got to share that story and said, "Hey, I'm the Vice President of this organization. I was once in your shoes. You can do it too." I've used my story to help young people and mentor youth in their adult life and help them find a path, reach their fullest potential. When I was young and dumb, I was young and dumb, but it's never too late to turn things around and answer God's calling on your life. You see, just like my story, filled with adversity and resilience, our city is filled with the same. And as leaders of this city, we must shake off the past, not erase it, but embrace it to help us move forward. So I stand here now as the Council President of the largest city in America, the 10th-most-populated city in the United States, and having risen back up from a dark place And having risen back up from a dark place, I have many people to thank and recognize for being a part of my life. So I'm gonna go through that right now. Thanks for letting me share that story. First, it's gotta be my Monroe May. You're my heart, you're my soul, you're my angel, you're my monkey, you're my crazy girl, you're what I live for, sweetheart. I love you, and just know everything that daddy does, when I have to work and I have to be out late, I do it for you, and I love you, and I'm so proud of you. How about Monroe? To my family, my mom, Sherry, right here in the front row, your husband, Rob. You know, a couple of years ago, she was living in Tennessee up on a mountain and said, "You know, I wanna move home just to be closer to family." But I really know, there's a little bit of it that just, the mother's instinct, that just, she knew that her baby needed her. And since she moved home, she's just been so solid in my life, helping me with Monroe and really being there for me. And I just wanna tell you I love you and I appreciate you, and I thank you, Mom. To my dad, the Colonel, Hank Carrico. What a leader amongst men and women in the Army. Had a career in hospitality, and I'll just think back on every time I ever went to his office, every time I ever went anywhere that he worked, someone that worked for him would pull me aside and say, "Your dad, man, he's just such a great guy. He just cares about people. He makes a difference in our life." You know, I've seen him buy shoes for dishwashers, I've seen him buy people bus passes. That didn't come on a P card, that came out of love for humanity, and I learned that from you, and I try to lead the same way. So, love you, pops. Thanks for being here. I got two brothers. My little brother, Brian, is in LA right now, just started a new job, he couldn't be here. But my big brother, DC, Danny, is in the house, and your whole family. We got Kelly, Brayden, Kyle, and Nolan. Danny, remember when we told mom we were gonna go catfishing? And we stole the Honda, and we drove from Indiana all the way to Washington DC in the middle of the night? We were 14 and 16 years old. You ended up in a juvenile detention center, and I ended up homeless for seven days, sleeping in boats, sleeping on park benches. We'll fill that part in. But who would've thought, big bro? Who would've thought those two rambunctious teenagers that put our mom through all kind of hell, that would be bold enough to run away from home, would be at this moment right now? Would be at this moment right now. So, big brother, man, I love you. Brian, if you're watching, I love you too. You guys are my best friends, man. I wouldn't wanna go through life with anyone else but you, man. Thanks for being here. It means a whole lot. He said, oddly enough, the person that bailed him out is sitting right here. That's my Aunt Bonnie, who is here from DC, who also met me on a street corner somewhere in Northern Virginia, and put me on a plane and sent me home to my mama when we did that foolish stunt. So thank you so much, Aunt Bonnie, Uncle Chip. I've got Uncle Steve, one of my mentors, one of the most positive adult male role models. Taught me a lot in life, man. I love you, Unc. Glad to see you here. From my dad's side, the family, I have Aunt Chris and the whole Tully gang. So happy you guys are here to support. My only regret is that your dad isn't here with us. You know, we love him. Uncle Jim, miss you. That's my Indiana family. So after we finish this party, I'm gonna head on out to Indiana for a week, so when those committee assignments come out, my phone's gonna be on airplane mode, I'm not turning it off. Don't call, I'm gonna be out in the country, having a good time. So, we'll talk about it when I get back. Next, I wanna just go through my friend group, my close friends, my circle, the ones that Monroe calls Aunt and Uncle, the people that are there for me, the people that kick me in the ass when I send out a bad tweet or act up, you know, stirring the pot on News for Jaxx. But they're there for me when I need them, man. That's Earl and Renita, that's Edmund and Michelle, that's Abner and Laney, Mincy and Santi, Will and Tracy, Jamar and Alexis, Terrance and Dewan, Alex Pantanakis, the brain child, he's up there somewhere. My childhood friends, Chief Barrier, Captain LaPointe, people that I grew up with, man. The list goes on. Your friendship means the world to me, and I call you a part of my circle, you're a part of my family. Love all y'all. Oh, look, right there, right there. To the Boys and Girls Club family, wow, y'all got me with the video, man. Y'all got me. That was really nice, man. My brother, Paul Martinez, my longtime friend, known you for probably 20 years now, so honored to be in the trenches with you, serving the lives of young people and making a difference in this community. But to my folks in the trenches at the Boys and Girls Club, they know, I had this written in my speech, I didn't know they were all gonna say it, and it doesn't matter how busy I am, when there's a need and there's a reason to put the kids first and show up, y'all know I'm gonna show up every time, show out. So all the love goes to my Boys and Girls Club family. Thanks for letting me do what I do. I know this job takes me away, but I appreciate you guys. Thank you so much. And to the ice-cold brothers of Alpha Phi Alpha Fraternity Incorporated, thanks for the love and support. I know my Chapter President, Dr. Gregory D. Bostic, is in the house. Thanks for being here. To all the brothers, especially my LBs, you know, I'm not only the first Alpha to take on this leadership role, I'm the first member of any D9 organization to reach this seat here in Jacksonville, Florida. So to my Alphas, I just gotta say a few things. Who you with? Who you with? One nine? Love y'all, man. Love y'all. I gotta mention some other organizations, my Leadership Jacksonville class, hey, 2019, the GOATs. All my Mandarin High alumni and friends, all my Florida State University Seminole Boosters, Life Work Leadership, all the folks that I spend time with when I'm not so busy out here doing this thing. So to Ballard Partners, for putting this all together, for raising the funds, doing all the details and making this event happen, I have to thank former Mayor Lenny Curry, Jordan Ellsbury, LeAnn Krieg, from the day I came into government, you guys, along with Brian Hughes, past President Sam Newby, a lot of folks really showed me the ropes and how to be an effective legislator, how to get things done in this city. So it means the world to me that now you're here helping to put this event together, so thank you so much. And of course, to our title sponsor tonight, that's Aubrey Edge and Daily's Place. That's someone who I don't call that often, but when we do talk, man, it's genuine, it's from the heart, and you don't ask me about policy, you ask me how I'm doing, you care about me, so I appreciate that. And this is a true fact, Monroe's favorite gas station is Daily's Place, because they have the best candy. So make sure, we'll introduce you to Mr. Edge later. Shout-outs to Daily's Place and Aubrey Edge. Thank you so much. Now, to my Jackie Lee. Who knows Jackie Lee? Jackie is the best ECA. If any of you have something to say, I will fight you afterwards. You know Jackie Lee is a sister to me, she's an extension to my family, she is my family, she runs my life. Make sure I'm in the right place at the right time. Without you, I wouldn't be here, I promise you that. So thank you so much. Love you, Jackie. Nico and Vic, the hosts with the most. Y'all, you know, we had the Bomb Squad come through earlier, we had to clear this out, make sure it was all safe. That wasn't for all these elected officials, that's because we had this celebrity right here, Nico, in the house, the National Youth of the Year for Boys and Girls Clubs of America. Thank you, man. I'm extremely proud of you and everything that you've done and accomplished. And Vic, from the day I met you, I went on air sometime about the Boys and Girls Club, you said, "If you ever need anything, man, just let me know." And I keep calling, you've never said no. So I appreciate you, Vic, for being here with me. I wanna acknowledge our mayor, Mayor Donna Deegan, who is here today. Thank you for being here. You know, it's been well documented, we haven't always seen eye to eye, it's mostly political things from a policy lens, but, you know, spoiler alert, I'm a Republican, she's a Democrat, you kind of expect a little bit of that. But we have some things in common, we have two things in common, actually. Florida State University, going old again, and the love for the City of Jacksonville. So I am committed to working hard to ensure that this city moves forward with class and distinction, being world-class, our citizens deserve it. I know you're gonna work with me, so thank you again for being here today, Mayor Deegan. To my Vice President, Brother Nick Callen, man, I'm extremely blessed to have someone like you as my second-in-command, your attention to details, your in-depth knowledge of finance, your love for the military, it's gonna be a great number-two punch to what we got going this year. So proud of you, man, and thank you so much. And then lastly, all these thank-yous, but definitely not least, to our Alcoa President, Randy White. Yeah. The chief. This last year, standing on your shoulders, man, it's really been an honor. You make things happen, you get things done. I've seen you make strides in this city for public safety and first responders. I don't think we've ever had a Council President that has paid as much respect and as much attention to making this city safer and making sure that we prioritize our first responders. Everything from the pension that you got through early in your, that you said early, this is what I want, this is what I want. I think you got it done before you even got sworn in, working with everybody. So I know your passion for police and fire will continue. Also glad that you're not done, I'm still gonna get a little bit of work from you in the next couple of years, so be ready. And I'm glad to have you serving with me on the battlefield, sir. Thank you so much. You're not just a friend, you're the person I call in the middle of the night that I know will answer. Don't tell them why I call, okay? Don't tell them, it's a secret. So to everyone I miss, thank you, thank you, thank you. Now, it's time to get to work. Nothing will have a bigger impact in our city's future than investing in our youth. We have to understand that our decisions today shape the Jacksonville our children will lead in the future. So to that end, I'll be launching a special committee on youth empowerment, youth services, and park programming. The committee will be led by former Council President Terrance Freeman. I haven't told you that yet. We'll look at park programming, how to reach the kids that aren't being reached, how to help with increasing digital literacy, closing the digital divide, workforce development initiatives, and strengthening our partnership with Duval County Schools to make sure we're all working together for the future of our young people. And unlike some committees in the past, ours will be empowered. You'll have a budget, you'll have a list of action items, and you will make a difference, my friend. All right? He said, "Let's go." So when it comes to downtown, the time is now to seize the momentum and complete the mosaic. So instead of being the most boring city, we compete to be the most vibrant. My goal is to continue the growth of downtown through public-private partnerships and look to activate our greatest resource, the St. John's River. Thanks to this council, previous councils, this administration, previous administrations, community stakeholders, we've made great progress downtown, but we can't slow down now. When we're done, we'll have the best city in the South, a place where everyone's gonna wanna come for their conventions, for their vacations, for their sports tournaments, for... I wanna see downtown in Jacksonville be a culinary destination, dare I say, maybe get a Michelin star. That's my vision. So whatever you can do to help me out with that, let's go. Downtown, we're all in. So with that goal in mind, I'm passing the baton on the special committee of the future of downtown to Councilmember Joe Carlucci, who's not here today, but he's gonna take the charge of that special committee and keep the momentum going, so we can truly have a world-class downtown that we're all proud of. So keeping with the theme of the future, we need to build up our future leaders. With much respect to those of us who've been here for a few years now, myself included, we need to build a bench. When I came to council, it took a bold move from one of our presidents, he's standing right beside me or right behind me, to make me a committee chair in only my second year. But I took that opportunity, used that momentum, gained that experience, and I think my time on LUZ is proven to be beneficial to the city. So under my presidency, I'll be appointing all one-term or first-term council members to serve as the chairman of all of our six standing committees, teamed up with a veteran to serve behind him as the vice chair. So I'll just get to it. Let me be the first to congratulate Councilmember Raul Arias, Finance Chair. Councilmember Chris Miller, where you at? Our newest rules chair. Councilmember Joe Carlucci's not here, he'll be our Chairman of the Land Use and Zoning Councilmember Mike Gay, Neighborhoods and Public Safety. Councilmember Will Lanin, the TU Chair. And Councilmember Ken Amaro, the Chair of the Waterways Commission. Thank you all for your service. I look forward to leading with all of you. I'm fully committed to ensuring all of our essential services have all the resources they need. We'll be responsible stewards of our taxpayer dollars, so I'm gonna reappoint past President Salem to continue the work of the DOGE Committee. And we'll take a sharp and deep look into potential legislative and creative ways to improve permitting and the department, so we can grow and do what we're wrong. Hey, you're back on DOGE, brother. I know you love that. Now, most importantly, safe neighborhoods are a foundation for strong communities. Back to Blue is not just a slogan, it's a policy stance. Sheriff TK Waters, Deputy Chief Willie Jones will be leading our fire department until we find the next man. This council is fully committed to giving you every tool and resource you need to get the job done and keep our community safe. Anything your departments need, we got you. So let's bring this back to where it all started. In Jacksonville, anything can happen. I'm a testament to that. Let's do the work, build a better city for the next generation, no matter their zip code, no matter their history, no matter their background, if I can do it, it proves that any kid in Jacksonville can do it. So one last thank you to Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior, who put this all in motion because I chose to believe. God bless all of you. Thank you for coming, and let the party get started.
Congratulations once again. You all may be seated briefly. If you thought he was gonna sing and you bet on it, you just lost some money. And you also kept it under an hour, which is very, very good, so we appreciate it. I had more jokes, you told me to go easy on you. I got a nice letter from Leon County when you... Sheriff went, checked on his laptop, and made sure you're good, so you can still go to Tallahassee. You can still go to Tallahassee for Duval Day, all right? You are good there.
Congratulations, Uncle Kev, man. You have been a big mentor in my life, and, you know, you have showed that every time I need you, I can call on you, and I really appreciate you for being that mentor. And a mentor who shows me variety, a mentor who shows me multitudes, and a mentor who shows me how to lead while also being yourself. So I just wanna say I appreciate you, man.
Well, ladies and gentlemen, this has been a wonderful experience, but before we adjourn this evening, I would like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as your MC. I also will ask you to remain seated before the benediction and recession, and that each of you reflect on the future of our great city and important contributions that you all made or have made towards enhancing our community's quality of life. Now, we will have the benediction by retired Brigadier General Fleming. We ask you to adjourn to the car museum after recession for cocktail hour before the reception
Good evening. As a native of Jacksonville, it's an honor to provide prayers for council leaders and their families. Teddy Rosamell had a famous speech in which he talks about the challenge of being the man or the woman in the arena. His focus was on, it's not the critic that counts, but it's the man or a woman who chooses to be in the arena. Each Jacksonville City Council member, and particularly the new President and Vice President, have each chosen to be in the arena, to give their time and talents to serve their city. As I offer a prayer for them, I would ask each of you to commit to pray for these leaders and their families. It is easy to criticize and complain about our political leaders and the decisions they make. However, there's a better way. The Bible instructs us to pray for them, as outlined in 1 Timothy. I urge them, first of all, their requests, prayers, intercession, and Thanksgiving be made for everyone, for kings and all those in authority. We often think about what political leaders can do for us. I think each of us can do a better job by thinking what we can do for them by praying for them. Let us pray. Holy God, we ask that you fill our Jacksonville City Council members and these two new leaders with wisdom, understanding, discernment, and knowledge. Grant them favor, increase their faith, and prepare them to pursue your excellence. Draw them to you and cause them to know and fulfill your purposes. Please place people in their paths who will provide sound and godly counsel. impart your wisdom and revelation to them about leadership and help them to lead. Help our leaders keep their hearts and motives pure. We ask you to make their hearts pliable, willing, and obedient to your will. Cause each of their lives to glorify your name. We also ask for favor for our council members' families, as these families make so many sacrifices for their family member to serve their community. May our prayers support our council leaders and members in their roles and bring unity